Thank you, Pam. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of June 7, 2023. My name is Doug Marshall and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:35 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda, which lists the Zoom link at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the Town of Amherst website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I'm here.
Thank you, Bruce. Tom Long.
Present.
Andrew McDougal.
Present.
I, Doug Marshall, am present. Janet McGowan.
Here.
Johanna Newman.
Present.
And Karen Winter.
Present.
Thank you all. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your request and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. All right, so the first item on our agenda is minutes. And Pam, do we have any minutes for discussion this evening?
No, no, we don't, Mr. Marshall.
Okay, thank you. So we'll now go to the public comment period item, the second item on the agenda. And I see 14 participants, or four attendees actually, in the public. Actually, three, Andrew McDougal is listed as a public attendee. So we have Elizabeth Verling, Maura Keane, and Tris Metcalf. Do any of the public wish to make a comment at this time? Okay, I don't see any hands from the public. We'll go to item three on the agenda. And the time now has just turned to 6:40. And so we will, we're going to open two public hearings simultaneously. The first was advertised to start at 6:35 and the second one was advertised to start at 6:40. These are a site plan review and special permit public hearings. The first one is 2023-04 with Amherst Community Television doing business as Amherst Media regarding a project at the corner of Gray Street and Main Street. It is a request for a two-year extension of time for site plan review approval SPR 2020-11 to construct a new building and associated site improvements for Amherst Media, a 501(c)(3) educational institution under section 3.330.0 of the zoning bylaw located in the BN zoning district on map 14B, parcels 250 and 251. The second hearing that we are now opening is a special permit, SPP 2023-04, also with Amherst Community Television and also on the corner of Gray Street and Main Street. It is also a request to extend for two years approval of the special permit approval, SPP 2021-01, under footnote A of table 3, Article 6 of the zoning bylaw, to modify the front setback requirement if required for a new building for Amherst Media located on the same zoning BN and parcels 250 and 251 on map 14B. So, board members, are there any board disclosures for this discussion? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Pam is, or Nate, is there a presenter from Amherst Media that would like to make a presentation?
I believe there is, Amherst Media is listed twice as a panelist, so.
Yeah, are one of those the person that would like to make the presentation tonight?
I think, yes.
Okay, I see a hand from Amherst Media. You can unmute yourself and speak.
Good evening, everybody. This is Jim Lustco, the Executive Director.
We heard your first sentence and your second one was somewhat garbled.
All right, let's try again. This is Jim Lustco, Amherst Media's Executive Director. Is that better?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for hearing this request. It's a formality that we just needed to do. We did meet recently with the Building Commissioner and with Nate and with Mr. Metcalf, who Metcalf associates is in the house with us. But it really was a matter of the timing of right before COVID. We got, came to a standstill and then as things moved forward, our architect, Mr. decided to retire. So we were kind of stuck in and running around and trying to find a new architect and to figure out how do you move forward at a time when people weren't even building. If you remember, there was a moratorium on. So we're very confident right now. We show, we have our full set of plans that we brought with us into the planning department the other day. We really think that we can move forward with the local historic district giving us a 90-day extension already that we can move forward as we need be to see this starting, as Nate said to us there, and Rob, that, you know, we should be able to do something really fairly quickly. There's very little that's changed as far as the site plan itself. That's all I have to say at the moment, but I entertain any questions or Mr. Metcalf is here in case there's any questions.
Okay. I assume that, Nate, the approvals we are being asked to give are based on the previous approvals with the previous plans and we are, we are not entertaining any changes to plans or other things this evening. This is purely a time extension?
Yeah, just a time extension. Their permits are set to expire on June 15. And so, you know, it's a quick turnaround to get a decision filed if the board decides by next week. But really, it is just an extension. There's no request to modify the conditions or waivers. It's really accepting it as it was permitted before. So they exist, you know, really, it's a, the vote would be a new permit number because it's a new year, but it's really just then saying to extend the 2020-11 permit.
All right. Okay. So, board members, any discussion of this request? Janet, I see your hand.
So, um, you know, if it wasn't for COVID, these permits would have lapsed after two years that they were, excuse me, issued by the, the decisions were assigned by the planning board or the, or filed with the town clerk. COVID told those kind of permits and I was wondering how much for? Is that why we're coming on to the June 15 date?
Right, right. So, you know, even the local historic district too, everything was told during COVID, right? So it started in, I don't know if it was March, went back to March 16 of 2020 and for, you know, gosh, I want to say it was, I don't know, I don't have the numbers handy, but it was, you know.
It was more than a year, but I can't remember either. And I was just wondering if you've done all those numbers because it seems.
Chris and Rob have, so I think it ended in, you know, November of '22 or something. And so they, we've calculated that. Chris did that a few times, Rob confirmed it, and so, yeah.
Okay, I was, that's what I was worrying about. I was, I was looking at, I was like, two years. And then I thought, okay, COVID, and I just wanted to make sure the numbers are right. Otherwise, they just, we'd have lapsed permits.
Right, they're still valid.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Janet. Bruce?
Jim, you said a moment ago that you have a full set of plans, was the phrase you used at the Building Commissioner. Do I correctly therefore understand that that's essentially a full set of construction documents supporting a building permit application to start work?
Hi, Bruce, it's good to see you again. It's been a while. No, I might have misspoken. Don't forget, I'm not, this isn't my, my field of expertise. What we brought in is the set that we will be presenting to the Building Commissioner. So I don't know if I'm answering your question or not, or if Mr. Metcalf would like to step in.
And would you be presenting these plans in order to apply for a building permit?
Yes.
Okay, that's, so you're about to, you're about to begin construction, is that correct?
We, we need to go back into local historic district. And that's why we got the extension on that first to make sure that, you know, they accept that nothing's changed dramatically to what was accepted by the local historic district. But yes, we are in the process.
But you have that already, right?
Well, the, sorry, I'll just jump in. One of the conditions of the certificate of appropriateness is that before the issuance of a building permit, Amherst Media returned to the local historic district commission to review, you know, even specifications on doors, windows, and things that weren't, you know, decided on when the.
By pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address. And put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Alright, so the first item on our agenda is minutes. And Pam, do we have any minutes for discussion this evening?
No, no, we don't, Mr. Marshall.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we'll now go to the public comment period items, the second item on the agenda. And I see fourteen uh particip- or four attendees actually uh in the public. Actually, three Andrew McDougall is listed as a public attendee. So we have Elizabeth Verling, Mara Keen, and Tris Metcalf. Do any of the public wish to make a comment at this time? Okay, I don't see any hands from the public. We'll go to item three on the agenda. And the time now has just turned to six forty. And so we will, we're going to open two public hearings simultaneously. The first was advertised to start at six thirty-five and the second one was advertised to start at six forty. These are a site plan review and special permit permit public hearings. The first one is twenty twenty-three dash zero four with Amherst Community Television doing business as Amherst Media. Regarding a project at the corner of Gray Street and Main Street. It is a request for a two-year extension of time for site plan review approval SPR twenty twenty dash eleven. To construct a new building and associated site improvements for Amherst Media. A five oh one C three educational institution under section three point three three zero point zero of the zoning bylaw. Located in the BN zoning district on on map fourteen B parcels two fifty and two fifty-one. Uh, the second hearing that we are now opening is a special permit SPP twenty twenty-three dash zero four. Uh, also with uh Amherst Community Television. And also on the corner of Gray Street and Main Street. It is also a request to extend for two years. Uh, approval of the special permit approval SPP twenty twenty-one dash zero one. Under footnote A of table three, article six of the zoning bylaw. To modify the front setback requirement if required for a new building for Amherst Media. Uh, located on the same zoning BN and parcels two fifty and two fifty-one on map fourteen B. So, uh, board members, are there any board disclosures for this uh discussion? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Pam is, or Nate, is there a presenter from Amherst Media that would like to make a presentation?
I believe there is Amherst Media is listed twice as a panelist, so.
Yeah, are one of those, uh, the person that would like to make the presentation tonight?
I think, uh, yes.
Okay, I see a hand from Amherst Media. You can unmute yourself and speak.
Good evening, everybody. This is Jim Lustco, the executive director.
Uh, we heard your first sentence and your second one was somewhat garbled.
All right, let's try again. This is Jim Lustco, Amherst Media's executive director. Is that better?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for hearing this request. Um, it's a a formality that we just needed to do. We did meet recently with the building commissioner and with Nate. And with uh Mr. Metcalf, who Metcalf associates is in the house with us. Uh, but it really was a matter of the timing of right before COVID. We got came to a standstill and then as things move forward, our architect, Mr. Tried to retire, so we were kind of stuck in and running around and trying to find a new architect and. To figure out how do you move forward at a time when people weren't even building. If you remember, there was a moratorium on. So we're very confident right now. We show, we have our full set of plans that we brought with us into the planning department the other day. Um, we really think that we can move forward with the local historic district giving us a ninety-day extension already. That we can move forward as we need be uh to see this starting as Nate said to us there and and. Rob, that, you know, we we should be able to do something really fairly quickly. There's very little that's changed. Um, as far as the site plan itself. That's all I have to say at the moment, but I entertain any questions or Mr. Metcalf is here in case there's any questions.
Okay, um, I assume that Nate, the uh. Approvals we are being asked to give are based on the previous approvals with the previous plans. And we are, we are not entertaining any changes to plans or other things this evening. This is purely a time extension?
Yeah, just a time extension. Their permits are set to expire on June fifteenth. And so, uh, you know, it's a quick turnaround to get a decision filed that if the the board decides. By next week, but really it is just a an extension. There's no request to modify the conditions or waivers. That's really accepting it as it was permitted um before. So they exist, you know, really it's a. The vote would be a new permit number because it's a new year, but it's really just then saying to extend the twenty twenty dash eleven permit.
Alright. Okay, uh, so board members, uh, any discussion of this uh request? Uh, Janet, I see your hand.
So, um, that, you know, if it wasn't for COVID, these permits would have lapsed after two years that they were. Um, excuse me, issued by the um, the the decisions were were assigned by the planning board or the. Or filed with the town clerk. Um, COVID told those kind of permits? And I was wondering how much for? Is that why we're coming on to the June fifteenth date?
Right, right. So, you know, even the local historic district too, everything was told during COVID, right? So it started. Um, and I don't know if it was March, went back to March sixteenth of twenty twenty and for. You know, gosh, I want to say it was, I don't know, I don't have the numbers handy, but it was, you know.
It was more than a year, but I can't remember either. And I was just wondering if you've done all those numbers because it seems.
Chris and Rob have, so I think it ended in, you know, November of. Twenty-two or something. And so they, we've calculated that. Chris did that a few times. Rob confirmed it and so, yeah.
Okay, I was, that's what I was worrying about. I was, I was looking at, I was like two years and then I thought, okay, COVID. And I just wanted to make sure the numbers are right. Otherwise, they just would have lapsed permits.
Right, they're still valid.
Okay.
Alright, thanks Janet. Bruce?
Yeah, uh, Jim, you you said a moment ago that you have a full set of plans was the phrase you used. At the building commissioner. Do I correctly therefore understand that that's essentially a. A full set of construction documents supporting a building permit application to start work?
Hi Bruce, it's good to see you again. It's been a while. Um, no, I might have misspoken. Don't forget, I'm not, this isn't my uh. My field of expertise. What we brought in is the set that we will be presenting to. The building commissioner, so I don't know if I'm answering your question or not, or if Mr. Metcalf would like to step in.
And and would you be presenting these plans in order to apply for a building permit?
Yes.
Okay, that's, so you're about to, uh, you're about to begin construction, is that correct?
We, we need to go back into local historic district. Um, and that's why we got the extension on that first to make sure that, you know, they accept that nothing's changed dramatically to what was accepted by the local historic district. But yes, we are.
Have that already, right?
Well, the, um, sorry, I'll just jump in. One of the conditions of the certificate of appropriateness is that before the issuance of a building permit. Uh, Amherst Media returned to the local historic district commission to review, you know, even specifications on doors, windows and things that weren't. Uh, you know, decided on when the certificate was issued. And so, again, it's not. Uh, a new hearing per se, it's really just going back at a public, you know, during, at a public meeting to determine. And to review these, you know, the conditions of the certificate to make sure they've met them all. So, you know. I I think when Rob and I met with Jim and Mr. Metcalf recently, it was getting close to write a a permit set, Bruce. So, you know, I think their their idea is that within the next thirty or sixty, you know, by thirty days. That they would apply maybe sixty, they would apply to the town for a building permit.
Okay, Bruce, uh, does that take care of your comments?
Uh, yes, but it gives rise to a second. Uh, uh, we, the. Once the construction begins, that's the fulfillment of the uh. Of of the uh period, right? So, um, it would seem that that they're really asked, what they really want is of, you know. A ninety-day extension rather than a two-year extension. So I guess I'd like to know why. Why a two-year extension if you're about to start construction?
Alright, Jim?
Um, the, where am I? The. We actually asked for ninety and Christine said, it was the one that came back to us and said that actually for the those two permits. You need to go for two year. That's what I was told.
Okay, it sounds like Nate's about to say the same thing.
Yeah, Nate, you want to fill us in?
Sure, the local historic district can only um provide a ninety-day extension. You know, an extension in ninety-day increments. And so they, you know, if the commission were allowed to go longer, they probably would have. And I think. For the site plan review and the special permit, you know, under the planning board's discretion, it's up to a two-year extension. So that's a statute, you know, that's a statutory. Limit, you know, the the board could decide that it would only grant a year extension. So it's a map, it's up to two years. Um, I would just be careful that it's not just, you know, getting a permit and then, you know, putting an excavator on the site. It actually has to be, um, you know, a fair amount of work. And so, you know, it would, I would recommend that the board not. Say a ninety-day or three, you know, I would say at least a year because, you know, they're going to be, if you say, say six months. And they missed the construction season now and they wait to the spring, they might not actually have fulfilled the permit of substantially starting construction, even if they're on site. And so then they'd have to do this all over again. Um, and so, you know, right, you may not think a two-year is 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 too long. But I wouldn't, I'd say, you know, three or six months might be a little short, just given the.
Is there any downside? I mean, it seems to me the upside of doing two years is then we are. Then we don't have to see them, you know, until two years have gone by in case there are all kinds of things we can't foresee. Uh, is there any, is there any downside to doing two years?
No.
Okay. Alright, so Bruce, uh. That's, that's the discussion about the time. Janet?
Um, I would agree with Nate in the two years because you don't want to get into a debate on what substantial construction is. And so I know there's been some example where um a person, a developer did really virtually nothing. But at the last second, like moved some earth and said that was substantial construction. And obviously it wasn't, but you know, you, I I think avoiding gray areas or discussions like that. And you want the, you want to issue the permits, they build it and it just doesn't hang out there. But um, I think, you know, at least a year, I would think, but you know, I don't want to be in a debate about that and, you know, so.
Well, it seems like, uh, from what I saw of the proposal so far, we were expecting to talk about a two-year extension. So, you know, it seems like nobody's objecting to that and there's some benefits, so maybe we should just go on that basis. Any other comments from any board members at this point? Alright, I'm going to turn to the public and ask if there are any public comments that on this topic that people want to make. Okay, I'm not seeing any members of the public raising their hands either. And I still don't see any from the board. Jim, any more comments you want to make or shall, are you fine with us going right into uh? Uh, probably having a motion to vote on this.
No, I I appreciate the discussion and I I'm willing to watch a motion go forward.
Okay, alright, so uh, do we have any motions from the board? Or do you want, you want me to go ahead and try to fumble my way through something? Oh, go, go Bruce, yeah.
I was gonna say, you do it and I'll say so moved.
Oh, okay. Alright, so.
You're looking at the, you're looking at the numbers uh at the, you know, at the data sheet there. So basically move to support the.
We should probably do this as two motions, one for each permit.
Yeah, I think one motion could be for the site plan review, you know, in a vote, and then a second one for the special permit.
Okay. Alright, so um. I guess I will make a motion to that the board approve Amherst Media's. Request for a uh, an extension of site plan review SPR twenty twenty dash eleven. For a period of two years. From uh its date of expiry, which I gather is June fifteenth. Is that right, Nate? Um, so, so from, so it would be extended to June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I'm going to stop my motion right there. Bruce, you can second that or do a friendly amendment if I miss something.
Second the motion.
Alright, thank you. Nate, comments?
My only comment would be to extend the permit uh with a new permit number, you know, twenty twenty-three dash four.
Okay.
Just so that it's clear, you know, we're not, we're issuing a new permit that will just cite and reference the twenty twenty permit.
Okay.
And to close the public hearing, I guess, has to be added in there.
Yeah, to, the motion would be to issue a new permit. Uh, designated as SPR twenty twenty-three dash zero four. At, in order to extend the approval previously proposed in SPR twenty twenty dash eleven. For a period of two years until June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Does that work, Nate?
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Bruce, you're fine with that as a for seconding?
Yep.
Alright, everyone, we got to a vote here. So. Uh, I guess, uh, without any further comments, I will go ahead through the the roll call. Bruce, are you on board?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Andrew, we'll see if we can hear you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Got it, thank you. Janet?
Aye.
Johanna?
Aye.
Alright, and Karen?
I missed a lot because somehow I was thrown out. So what are we voting on?
So this is a motion to issue a new permit to uh extend the approval of the previous permit.
Yes, 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 I, I.
Okay, and this is the first of two motions and this one deals with the site plan review and the second one will deal with the special permit. Okay, so Karen, you're an I and I'm an I as well. That's unanimous. Seven in favor, no abstentions or objections. So, that uh, topic is completed. And uh, I suppose as the second motion. Um, I'm going to do it very much the same, but I'm going to include that we close the hearing. Because we, we, we need to do that. So the second motion is that we close this public hearing. Or joint public hearing and that we issue a new permit. For a two-year extension of the special permit approval. We made previously under SPP twenty twenty-one dash zero one. Also for a duration of two years to June fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And uh, hey Bruce, you want to second that?
I'll second that.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, any further discussion, any further hands from the board or the public? Okay, I do not see any. We'll go through the same roll call in a reverse order. Karen?
Aye.
And Johanna?
Aye.
Thank you. Janet?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Thank you, Andrew. Tom?
Aye.
And Bruce?
Also, aye.
And I'm an I as well. So that one is unanimous also. And the time now is six fifty-nine and we have closed the public hearing that was item three on our agenda. Alright, thank you all. So, uh, in our advertised agenda. Um, the next item on the, on the list was the, was old business, item four. Nate or Pam, are, is there any old business we did not reasonably anticipate? No, no business. Okay, what about new business?
I'm not aware of any new business either.
Alright. So we'll go to Form A and R subdivision applications and I believe there is one topic on that. Um, Pam, do you want to bring up the graphics and Nate, do you want to introduce the topic? Actually, I I I was neglect, I neglected to say thanks to Jim and uh, good luck with your project. And uh, you don't need to stay for additional parts of the meeting unless you want to listen in.
Sure, so you know, this, A and R is on Cortland Drive. And on the existing map, there's two parcels in blue and red. And the red one was actually, uh, you know, developed through A and R in twenty twenty. Uh, from the, the lot to the, it's to the north, but to the left on the screen. And now the owner of the blue lot would like to combine it and they purchased the, the red one and they want to combine it into one lot. So one lot under the same ownership. They're, they're, they're same ownership now, but they'd like to combine it. And so that's really what the A and R is, is just combining the two lots into one.
So they get rid of this?
Yep. There's been, you know, the Jason Skiles, a town engineer, had no comment or concerns with this.
Okay, and I assume that since uh it was legal for them to split this parcel. At some point in the past, there's no issues with recombining it.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, board members, any, any uh questions or? Concerns? I think the question is going to be whether there's a consensus that it's okay for me to sign that. Uh, that an A, that the approval is not required on this, this uh transaction. Alright, don't all speak at once. Okay, so uh, I guess I'll ask more pointedly. Uh, please raise your hand if you have any objections to my signing this. Uh, as approval is not required. And if I don't see any, I will conclude that that's a consensus and we can move on. Alright, I dragged that out long enough. There are no hands raised. So we will. Uh, Pam or Nate, uh, you guys can let me know if you want to meet me behind Town Hall some evening to sign this. As I do with Chris or whether we need to wait for her to come back. Alright, the time now is seven oh three and we'll go to the upcoming ZBA applications, anything?
No, I have nothing new to report.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna just say quickly that, you know, there's the, you know, the solar, Shrewsbury Road solar is something that would be coming soon. And then uh Valley CDC's Ball Lane project, the comprehensive permit in North Amherst for thirty homeownership units. Will probably be submitted in the next, you know, month, month and a half. So those are, you know, two pretty big projects, not. Um, but there could be other things as well.
Okay, Janet, I see your hand.
Um, what's the Shrewsbury Solar?
It's, it's a pretty large solar development, actually Shrewsbury Road, um, you know, on Cole's property is probably about fifty acres. Uh, I don't know, I forgot how, you know, how much they've been clearing, but it's something the town staff has been working with AMP Energy and the applicants to. You know, finalize plans and make sure everything is, you know, in accordance with the regulations. So it's something that has been. You know, they applied, withdrew and they've submitted again with revised plans, wetland delineations, you know, of um. A lot more information that was required or requested of the town.
Um, and so why is it coming for us just to look at and then, because I, the ZBA is the one who issues the permit, right?
Right, no, it is a special permit through the ZBA. It's just oftentimes if there's a permit, you know, say that may be impactful or the planning board may want to. Review as well as, you know, uh, to provide recommendation to the zoning board.
Okay.
Yeah, Janet, uh, they're just letting us know that these two projects are coming and we can decide whether we want to see them.
Right.
Oh, I think, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think Valley CDC, I mean, we're required to notify the planning board and send a transmittal out. Once they apply really quickly and so the hearing has to be opened within thirty-five days. So once that happens, the planning board would get a transmittal for this comprehensive permit. And then it could be, you know, your decision to have a presentation if you'd want to as well, just to, you know, let you know that it could be that, you know, in. August, early August or sometime in August would be probably the time, maybe September, that you would have that discussion or presentation.
Okay, so are you interested in hearing whether we're interested right now or is that later on?
Later.
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks for letting us know that those are coming. And obviously August is a time that a lot of people are traveling, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Okay, um, upcoming SPP, SPR and SUB applications. Have we got anything on the horizon?
Nate, would you like to talk about those?
No. No, there, we do have a site plan review application on June twenty-first for a restaurant at sixty-three Main Street. So that's something that. You know, is already in the permitting. Uh, there's a few uh products that we've been discussing with applicants. Uh, you know, EverSource is looking to do some work at the substation on College Street. And that's something that'll likely come in the July meeting. Uh, there's a resident that would like to. Uh, do some work on their property on Vista Terrace and every property there is actually subject to a site plan review. So anytime there needs to be changes, it has to come back for a site plan review. So that's something. And then.
Where, where is Vista Terrace?
Vista Terrace is south of Atkins. It used to be Applebrook. So it's, if you're heading south past Atkins, it's on your left. Before you start heading up, up the notch. So it's a, um, you know, it's a recent subdivision. Few years ago.
Near, near the gun club.
Yes. Yeah, it's funny. I mean, I know, I can hear it. I was hiking Moody Bridge the other weekend and I was like, oh, what's that noise? Like, oh, that's the gun club.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I don't, you know, I don't, you know, I'm trying to think that there might be one other, but we're, we've been working with applicants to try to get a full. Application set before they apply. I mean, I, you know, I, I feel for, for applicants, you know, they may not understand and we try to convey it, but. You know, uh, even EverSource had submitted a plan that didn't show half the improvements they were planning and we said, well, we really want to have that plan. And they said, well, can we just apply and then we can try to get it to you before the planning board hearing? And it's like, well, we prefer you not to because then we're just, we're chasing, we're waiting. And so, um, yeah, so anyways, that's where, you know, I think that's where. Some delays might be in actually getting applications to you, but it's really important that we don't open a hearing and continue it three times.
Yeah, I, I personally, I appreciate you're doing that for us. Uh, it's always easier to just have. One plan with everything on it and not have to have multiple versions or things show up two hours before a meeting.
Right.
Okay, so we can move on. Uh, the time is seven oh eight and we can move on to planning board. Committee and liaison reports. Uh, Bruce, anything for PVPC?
Uh, there's a meeting uh tomorrow, um, but I won't be able to attend actually. But uh, they are planning to meet and uh, it has to do with election of officers, actually, which and and so forth. Um, I don't think Jack's able to attend either, but uh, our attendance has been pretty good. I did notice in the April minutes that. our attendance has been pretty good. I did notice, uh, in the April minutes that, uh, that two thirds of the towns represented, uh, weren't represented in the meetings. So, uh, even, you know, we've, we've been showing up, seems to have put us in the top third of, uh, industrious participants.
Well, good. We certainly waited a long time to have you represent us. Okay, uh, Andrew, anything for CPAC?
Thanks Doug. Um, I know there were efforts to convene a meeting, um, the dates that were thrown out, I was not able to make. I am not sure whether a meeting was held or not. But, um, there was, again, some efforts to get together, but I have no updates for the board.
Okay. All right, thank you, Andrew. Tom, DRB?
Nothing to update.
Okay. Janet, solar bylaw, how's that going?
Um, it's, it's dense. Um, our next meeting is, we're starting to talk about, um, solar on farmland. And so our meeting on Friday from eleven thirty to one thirty is talking about the smart program requirements for dual use and does dual use farming really work or what, you know, is known about that? And what would the impact be on, most of the farmers and Amherst actually don't own the land. Um, and, you know, so we're gonna dig into that. Um, and trying to get farmers to come to this meeting, unfortunately, is really the worst possible time of the year. So I don't think we have any, we have someone from American Farmland Trust coming and somebody from the state, but we don't have farmers yet. And so it's an interesting and really difficult issue. So if people wanted to attend, they'd be welcome to do it.
Okay, and that's Friday at eleven thirty?
Friday, eleven thirty to one thirty. Yeah, we have, I have a flyer I could send out to people. I should have done that already.
Yeah, why don't you send it to Nate and he can distribute it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't think about that.
All right, um, so in, in Chris's absence, uh, Nate, do you have anything to say about CRC?
No, I, you know, I will say that, uh, previous meeting, there was a discussion about the lighting policy and then, you know, the zoning amendment. And the zoning amendment, I think both are coming back. So the zoning amendment will be at the next meeting, you know, the duplex, triplex and housing amendment, it will be discussed again by the planning board. So.
Okay. All right, uh, I don't have any report of chair, nothing new on my end. I, uh, actually, I will mention, you know, I think it was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but if, if you would send, uh, me and Chris your dates of absence this summer, that would help us know whether we might need to cancel a meeting or two. Anything, uh, report of staff, Nate?
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say is the decisions for Amherst Media that we just voted on tonight need to be filed, you know, by the fifteenth with the town clerk. So I hope would be to have something ready by the end of day tomorrow, sent out for your review. And then, you know, we need to get signatures, you know, early next week, just to be able to file that. So that's something we'd have to act on pretty quickly.
Okay, well, so I trust you would send out an email to all of us when they're, when it's ready to be signed?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I could, I could make an appointment with you right now to, to meet you at five fifteen tomorrow night behind, uh, Town Hall.
I will not be there at five fifteen, but, uh,
Okay, then, then, then I'll wait to hear from you.
Sure, yeah, I'll send an email.
Okay. Um, so that concludes our meeting. Uh, if there's nothing else from you, Nate, for a report of staff. The time now is seven twelve and, uh, unless anybody objects, we, we can adjourn.
Hey Doug, it's Andrew, can I ask one quick thing?
Sure.
Uh, it's super fast. I know we've talked about it, uh, many times, but, any chance we could meet in person, uh, over the summer? I'm not sure if any business schedule, but I would love to, uh, try to get the board together. I think as, as some of you know, not everybody's, uh, going to be on the board this fall. So it would be wonderful to-
And I understood that-
People.
I understood that you and Tom were coming off the board as of the end of this month. And I was-
Is that, is it, is it the end of this month? I, I, I just, I know we started in September. Um, I'm not sure when our term officially ends, but, but anyway, with that backdrop, yeah, it would, it would really be wonderful to
Yeah, I, I was thinking I would- Try to send out some dates where we might all get together in my backyard again. You know, and so that, uh, we can properly send you guys off the board. So I'll, I'll, I will-
I would like that.
Tonight, uh, probably, and, um, we can all discuss when, when would make the most sense. Nate?
Yeah, I was just gonna confirm that, the, whether or not you started on June thirtieth, the terms end on June thirtieth. So that's what, that would be the, the, the termination of those.
Okay. And Nate, uh, is, um, CRC and Town Council, are they working on, nominating new members to the board?
Yes, they're, they're looking at that for both, you know, zoning board and planning board will have vacancies after June thirtieth. So they're, they're aware of it and working on it.
Okay, and, but you don't expect the decisions and nominations to be finalized before the end of this month?
I thought they were doing, they're holding interviews this month in the, um, you know, then there's thirty days for council to uh, review those appointments. So it could be that, you know, the new appointments are ready in, in early to mid-July, but.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all and, uh, I guess we'll see you all in two weeks. And, uh,
Hi, everyone.
Travelers, travel safely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Everybody. Wow.
We did it. Whoops, we're still recording. Stop.
Okay, good night. Thank you, Pam.
Okay, good night, Mr. Marshall. Yes, I want to stop. Recording stopped. Bye.